Julie, will you call a roll?
Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Commissioner Pujol.
Here.
Commissioner Lodge.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Higgins.
Here.
Vice Chair Campanella.
Here.
Chair Thompson.
Okay, as far as the preliminary matters, let's first ask if there are any continuances, withdrawals, postponements, anything added?
No.
Okay, any announcements or appeals?
No announcements or appeals.
Okay, we'll go to the draft minutes of March 18th, the special meeting and workshop. Does anybody have any comments or changes? Commissioner Lodge.
Chair Thompson, I had some changes to my comments as they were recorded. I think we often have a problem, we give Ms. Rodriguez a really hard time because she has to figure out what we said, or what we meant to say, or what we intended to come across. Anyway, I did make some changes to my comments, which I gave to her. If nobody else has any additions, corrections, whatever, I would move to...
You want to read it into the record?
Okay. This is on page four, the fourth bullet down. The consultant was hired to... Well, sorry. Consultant, the third sentence down. A consultant was hired to work on a zoning ordinance barring drilling, oil drilling. It was the... It was... There needs to be a period after ordinance, and barring oil drilling deleted. And then adding a couple of sentences. Community opposition was strong, period. One month later, the planning commission asked the city council to repeal the ordinance.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I just... I have no changes, but I just wanted to compliment Julie actually for both sets of minutes, because normally you don't see as much detail in the minutes, because they're action minutes, not illustrative minutes, or whatever the opposite would be. And I just want to say, I think you did a great job of capturing the comments, both on this one and on the subsequent hearing for Ellen Canto. And I know that's an extra burden on staff to make sure you work really hard and not annoy any of us in our opinions, and I think you did a great job. So, just wanted to pass that along, and I'll be happy to move adoption.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion and second to adopt the minutes of March 18th. Any objections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, March... What's the next one? March 19th. Anybody have any comments or questions? Mr. Campanella.
Yes, I had requested one addition. Julie, if you could maybe read that under my comments. It was a comment I made at the closing comments to the applicant.
Yes. Commissioner Campanella asked a statement be added that now reads, "Commissioner Campanella stated that the ability to park employees off-site is a real benefit to the hotel, which they would not want to lose, since it gives them the ability to cater to their guests and other events at the hotel."
Okay. Any other changes? Okay, can we have a motion to approve it?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I want to abstention.
And Commissioner Lodge abstains. I vote to approve the minutes. I listened to the whole thing. Okay, the next item is comments from the public on items not on the agenda today. Allison, are there any speaker slips for the public comment?
Chair Thompson, not for items not on the agenda.
Okay, so we'll close that and move on to the discussion item, which is the Bicycle Master Plan. Allison, who's giving your opinion? Staff report?
Peter Brown from the city's Transportation Division of Public Works will give the staff report.
Okay, Mr. Brown, over to you.
Thank you, Chair Thompson, members of the commission. I think the best thing to do is to start like this.
My friends have had too many horror stories of doors opening, cars pulling out into them.
We live off Santa Barbara Street, so driving up Santa Barbara Street, having more of a, maybe just a specific bike lane would be great.
We live on Alameda-Patria-Serra, and it's really become very dangerous for older people, young people, anybody to walk, because the traffic is far too fast, it's not patrolled, and I'm really sorry, but, you know, we live in a situation where we don't have people that are considerate of a neighborhood.
Well, I think that Santa Barbara has a good opportunity to expand on public transportation and be like, sort of a model for the rest of California, being that in the next 15 or 20 years, things are only going to get more crowded. There's only going to be more and more people in this state.
Commissioner Thompson, like many things going on in the world today, if you want to grab the attention of a segment of the population, a quick video is one of the ways to do that. And so, that is a sneak peek at our introductory video that is on the new Bicycle Master Plan website. What I'll do right now is I'll walk the commission through the work we've done to date, and the anticipated launch of our public outreach campaign, which I guess would officially start after the April 7th city council hearing next week. Here's a look at the team that is working on the Bicycle Master Plan. The city team is a strong one. I believe that there's a lot of experience on this team in terms of dealing with the city process and the will of the citizenry. We happen to have picked a strong consultant team as well. The direction that Transportation Division staff got from city council back in July of last year was to prepare a plan that was really driven by the community, and so that's one of the reasons why we're here today. The project schedule, this is similar to something that may have been in your handout. This is the more refined and detailed version in terms of the timeline. We're in that January to April phase right now, and April to May, we're launching the outreach campaign. So, that's one of the purposes of why we're here, is to kind of go over the details of that. I think probably worth noting is explaining what a stakeholder roadshow is. We had some discussion lively over email prior to the commission hearing today about the stakeholder list. The purpose of that list is to identify folks that we think, or that you think, may be interested in having the city staff come to them and have a one-on-one presentation for the purpose of the plan, what they think the city should do, and really to provide their input. Another thing to think of is the stakeholder roadshows is another way for folks to participate that don't attend the summit. The neighborhood summits are really the anchor events of the public outreach, and we have five of those scheduled, along with around five interfaces with the Transportation and Circulation Committee, three with your planning commission, and at least three with city Little background in history as to how Santa Barbara became as interested as it is in things like sustainability and sustainable transportation. I think the '69 oil spill really impacted the community. It also brought some level of awareness to how we power ourselves and get around. That was one of the impetus that led to the 1974 Bicycle Master Plan, which was award-winning and is very interesting to read in all of the suggestions it makes around 30, 40, 40 years ago, actually. It took a while for the city to come to the second iteration. That was in 1998, and I've left a copy of the very well-done, I believe, 1998 plan in front of all of you, along with a couple of our neighborhood flyer handouts, so that those are all for your record and reference as you see the plan get updated. More on a cursory level, in 2003 and '08, we came back to the council because in order to be eligible for statewide and federal grants, you had to have a currently adopted Bicycle Master Plan. And so, we just referenced the '98 plan in '03 and '08, and the council adopted those and maintained our eligibility for those funding programs. Which of course takes us to this year, 2015. We've secured funding from the regional government, the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, to fund the majority of this update. And this map kind of just shows the current facility and the network that we have on the streets today. Some recent efforts that you may be aware of, on the lower portion of the screen, you see kind of a couple of folks unfortunately getting ticketed for some kind of ill behavior. We're also building a new style of, or at least have built one, a bike corral that's on the Cannon Perdido block. And then, of course, our signage and crosstown routing system is fairly well-used. The Bicycle Master Plan, like many other city plans and documents, references and connects with other programs. The primary one that's actually not listed here is the circulation element. The East Side Transportation Management Plan is a recent effort that has some bike projects in it that we heard from the community upon. In 2006, the city adopted its pedestrian master plan, obviously a pretty strong nexus between the pedestrian and bicycle networks. ATP stands for the Active Transportation Program, which the city has thus far been very successful in the first round. And then I referenced there, you know, the other things, along with bike parking and education enforcement. The League of American Bicyclists has designated Santa Barbara as worthy of a Silver designation. There's actually several other designations higher than that for what we've done to date. And one of the questions we're asking is, what is the future of biking in Santa Barbara? That is a question that we really want the community to answer, and so that's why there's such a strong emphasis on the outreach phase. So, the good question that we're asking is, what might be next? Here on the picture, I think it's pretty interesting. You see a guy on a road bike, and he's riding on a sidewalk, and so that's telling us that he's not comfortable in the roadway. So, that's an illustration of some of the conflicts we have. So, should we improve existing facilities? Should we focus on addressing safety and conflicts? There are gaps in the existing network that could be closed if the public thinks that's important. The 80-to-80 reference is an age one. And many cities have adopted an 80-to-80 approach that says, look, if you're an eight-year-old kid, we want you to feel comfortable riding your bike on our streets. If you're an 80-year-old person and still active and want to get around by bike, that should be a possibility as well. Santa Barbara having certainly unique historic and architectural context. We're looking for solutions that are by Santa Barbarans for Santa Barbara. And one of those may be, in some cases, to just keep the existing network as is. We have about 10 maps that we've worked with our consultant to prepare that look at our safety analysis and our collisions in town. This is over the last 10 years, based on statewide reporting. You can see a concentration of incidences along State Street. I would say that Modoc and Correo also stand out, along with a few at that Sterns-Worf intersection, and maybe even along Milpas Street. So, we have some corridors where we know collisions are taking place. We've also got, as I mentioned, nine other maps that look at things such as where incidences occurred with bicyclists at fault, where incidences occurred with the vehicle driver at fault, whether they were related to right turn or left turn movement. So, we've broken this map down into very specific detail that can kind of help us as we cross-reference that with perhaps future proposed facilities or solutions. The Office of Traffic Safety in Sacramento puts out an annual report of incidences of collisions, and unfortunately for Santa Barbara, of the 102 cities that are in our population range between 60,000 and 100,000 residents, were the second worst in pedestrian collisions and the fourth worst in bike collisions. There's two sides to that story from where I come from. One has to do with the fact that we have very vibrant streets, and we have a lot of pedestrian and bicycling activity. So, this is not, I would caution, a rate of incidences. It's number of incidents, so it's a pure number. But at the same time, we certainly can do better. Just the last few slides here before we open it up to commission comments and questions. We have several layers of community engagement. The project website is live. I'll show that to you briefly. We have an online survey that anyone can take. We have a Facebook page. We have an interactive online map where folks can very specifically tell us where and what they'd like to see. We have some flyers that are going out, some of the hard copies I've shown you today, and we're going to begin our information blasting via a lot of the social media networks next week. As you can see, video documentation is important to us, so we're going to be filming some of the interactions that happen at our meetings. You saw a few snippets of what we call intercept surveys, where we went out in the street and asked for the public's opinion. I think that'll be an important way to show the council and your commission in the end how we've done, what we've done to come up with our plan. The stakeholder roadshows I talked a little bit about earlier, again, the primary purpose of this is to invite everyone on our stakeholder list an opportunity to schedule a roadshow with us, where city staff and/or the consultants will come to you and really seek your input, perhaps at a meeting you already have scheduled, because we know that it's very difficult for folks to attend a lot of these public meetings, whether they be day, evening, weekend, weeknight. So, we want to come to them. The five neighborhood summits, I think there's a... The last slide talks a little bit about those, but those will be very important meetings. And I think for the first time, actually, the city of Santa Barbara will be conducting two of those summits entirely in Spanish. So, it won't just be a matter of like, putting on a headset and getting a translation, and perhaps being in a room where you feel like everyone else speaks a language that you don't speak. Instead, we're going to a couple of our Latino neighborhoods, and we're going to have Spanish conducted meetings. You've seen in your handout some attachments of the outreach and media strategy that kind of outline our approach. Again, we're kind of in that step-two, step-three phase. And just for the planning commission's information, step-four, we will schedule a future meeting, likely in the month of July, where the consultant will come up and talk to the commission about step-four, which is, we went out to the community in the months of April and May. This is what we heard, and this is how that information is being incorporated into the plan. And so, that'll be a key fork in the road for the commission to say, okay, well, that sounds good, how about this? And kind of give the consultant and staff direction in July to how to prepare the draft plan, which will also come back to the commission later in the fall. This is kind of a snippet, this slide of the handout that's before you. This is quite impressive to me that here it is, just early April, and we have the dates, times, and locations for meetings six weeks away. So, we've done our homework, and we've gone out, and we've secured these facilities, and now we can start advertising to folks to come out to these neighborhood summits. You can see the two of those that are on the east side and west side, we're going to do in Spanish. English speakers are welcome, obviously. And then, of course, uptown, downtown, and in the Mason neighborhood will also have their own summits as well. Your final slide, all of the city's information, as most of us know, and some of us are about to find out, is at santabarbara.ca.gov. If you put in a slash BMP, you'll get straight to our website. If you want to take our bicycling survey, it's 10 questions, it's short, it's very informative. We have those options, both in English and in Spanish. ciclismosb.org is the Spanish version. The Facebook page is up, and again, there's the detailed schedule. My contact information at the bottom, for those in Spanish or English that want to contact me, may do so. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Peter. I have a question for you. What's the role of the Transportation and Circulation Committee in this plan? You talked about coming back here to the planning commission, but do you get this vetted through the TCC also?
I would say that, Commissioner Thompson, that's a good question. I think for us, the Transportation and Circulation Committee is our first line of input. They're probably going to get a total of about five interfaces with the Bicycle Master Plan. We've been to them three times already, just kind of letting them know where we are, what progress we've made, that we're staying on schedule. I would say that, for me, their role would be to keep us on task and give us good direction. That direction came to you all, I believe, in the form of the minutes for the last two meetings. I think the planning commission role is similar, however, being more of a clearinghouse for almost all of the city's committees and the recommendation body for the city council. Your role may be a little bit higher level, and to make sure that the recommendation that goes forward to council is in line with what you've seen and experienced throughout the project.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody on the commission have any questions for Mr. Brown or other staff before we go to public comments? Okay, well, do the public comments. Oh, Ethan.
Hi, how are you today? Okay. This is a new iPhone 6 Plus, and I'm going to try to read this as well as I can here. Neither Marshall, Waller, Wiley, or Coller, Armstrong, or Lopez, or even Brownie Allen, wrench lack of diction and statutory exclusion that provide collecting from the handicapped and elderly, disabled. All you can do is put cologne on that Casey. The point of government is to provide public health, disaster relief, and criminal justice support, allowing free enterprise to navigate aesthetic preference to hospitality and recreation. Handicap access must meet equal or more than existing services currently provided, protected from electric car, bike lane, or valet criteria. Given the legal theory involved, does a fee schedule broadcast to the public denote free speech or libel, if not coercion, method to function this economy?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Scott Wins, representing Cars Are Basic. If you include the number of years I was on a tricycle, I've been riding bikes in this town for 65 years. When I got out of the Army, I got ahold of the master plan, which I have a copy of here, and I bought fully into it. I can't say I'm backing it at all anymore. When you look at the realities of biking in the city of Santa Barbara, we've had 40-plus years now of policy and implementation. And I have a letter here, and I want the commission to look at it at its leisure, and then make sure those comments are included in any pros or cons on this Bicycle Master Plan. You have a real problem here. Number one, let's go for the stakeholders. You have a stakeholders' list here. If you remove every individual or organization that has a government subsidy, that list goes down to about five. Cars Are Basic's been around for 17 years. We have a fully qualified traffic engineer. It has over 20 years of building roads and freeways as one of its consultants. We're not a stakeholder. We're not a stakeholder on any list for the city of Santa Barbara. And we haven't been for 17 years. That's how long we've been around. That has to stop. That's number one. Number two, Ed France, Director of the Bicycle Coalition, standing at this podium two years ago, ripped the city of Santa Barbara at the council session, stating that the city of Santa Barbara didn't rank in the top 50 cities in the entire nation. How do you go from the top, not being in the top 50, to being number three in the state? Something's wrong here. The Bicycle Coalition presented information to the city transportation personnel, saying, we have 300% increase in bicycle use since 2010. That survey, by the census, is absolutely a false and misleading survey. I'd taken that to the International Conference of Sports Medicine that I belong to, and I've asked some of the top epidemiologists, one of whom has a PhD in statistics. I said, does this survey have any relevance to what's going on on the streets? She said, absolutely not. Another individual that supports this organization called up the SB CAG statistician and asked him, does this survey have any relevance to what's going on? He says, no, it's bogus. You're being given false and misleading information. This supposed report that's being done, Councilman Francisco is absolutely correct. He could write it himself and save the city of Santa Barbara $200,000, because no hard data's being collected. It's all, what do you want? What do you think? You saw a film up here that was obviously prejudicial. This has to stop. If you can't depend upon hard numbers, and you can't depend upon people like me, whose family goes back to the 1800s, and speaks the truth, I've never lied, ever once, to this or any other organization, the city of Santa Barbara, SB CAG, or the Board of Supervisors, then if you can't depend upon us, then you need to stop this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Becker? Be the last. Tom Becker would be the last speaker.
Mr. Chair, if I could just throw in a comment.
Commissioner Jordan has a question.
I don't know that I'll be thanked for this by anybody that I know, but I did add you to the stakeholder list yesterday for the outreach. I'm a firm believer in getting the biggest naysayer involved, and I was a little taken back that you weren't on the list, because I think you have certainly a right to be heard, whether you're listened to or not, you have a right to be heard. So you were added to the list yesterday that we have in front of us.
Thank you. Tom Becker, representing the Automotive Coalition. Yes, sir, we have a right to be heard, but we also have a right to be given the truth. Maybe you left that out. City staff deliberately failed to inform the city council and the taxpayers of the last Bicycle Coalition bike count that was performed in June. That count showed a significant decrease, and I mean significant decrease, in bicycle usage between 1998 and 2014. Your staff deliberately and intentionally withheld that information from the city council and the taxpayers for the purpose of deceiving the city council and the taxpayers into thinking that something was happening when it's not. That bicycle count data's been collected since '98, and the city used that data in both the 2003 and the 2008 Bicycle Master Plan updates as conclusive proof of bicycle increasing, or increases and decreases. But now your staff is deliberately and intentionally withholding the latest bike count from you, the taxpayers, and the city council. Where are they doing that? The bicycle increase that you saw here is based on census data that is so inaccurate, it's shocking that your staff would have the nerve to present it to you or anyone else. I went to SB CAG statistician, showed him the information. He says, "I would never do what the city did." And he's the man that puts together the reports for SB CAG. He says, "This is bogus. The city doesn't know what they're doing." That's from SB CAG. SB CAG's the one who funded this Bicycle Master Plan, and they're telling me and your staff that your methods are bogus. The city council approved a $200,000 contract with these people. The city council themselves were told that there is sufficient city staff to do this at a fraction of the cost. You don't have to go out and hire an expensive firm from Los Angeles to do this. Your own staff could have done it and saved the taxpayers, I estimate, $100,000, but your staff wouldn't do it. They wanted to spend the money. And finally, the city's repeated withholding of information from the taxpayers shows a systemic pattern of behavior on the part of the city government. And this is going to get this city government in trouble. It already has. When you can prove to a court a systemic pattern of behavior of withholding information from people, including information that the people have a clear legal right to, that demonstrates that this city is in collusion altogether. And finally, SB CAG, who gave you this money, I've gone to SB CAG and said, "You need to get your money back. The city can find another source for this, but SB CAG should get their money back," because SB CAG gave the city the money to conduct a proper, honest master plan, not something that's based on lies, falsehoods, and misrepresentations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other speakers? Okay, over to the commission for any subsequent questions and comments. Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, I'm just getting over laryngitis, so bear with me. I'm on page seven, page seven of Exhibit B, which is the Outreach and Media Strategy. I guess this is to Mr. Brown. It references project goals, Mr. Brown, but I don't see a clear description or identification of what the project goals are. Could you help me with that? This is included in step four, collect feedback under Stakeholder Roadshow. In the middle of the page, the paragraph starts out, "Most importantly," and then there's a reference to project goals.
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Schwartz, very simply, the goal of the project is to update the 1998 master plan, to create eligibility for future funding sources, as well as to have that process, which was the goal determined by council, be a public process that was really guided by the community. So I think that that would be my short answer. I can certainly put that in writing. I think it'd be a little more clear if we had that in the strategy, what the goal of the plan is. That's a good point that you make. So that's what I have for you.
Okay. I think that would be helpful, especially as you take it out into the community, so that the community's responding, at least in part, to what you're telling them the project goals are, vis-à-vis what the council has approved.
Understood.
On that same page, down towards the bottom, this is now under 4.4 Intercept Surveys. The input that you're going to gather from the public, and if you want me to wait till July, I can come back to this when you return to us. I'm curious how the public input will be evaluated for determining what makes its way into the update. You know, are you going to wait, W-B-I-J-H, you know, wait certain information? Because I'm guessing you're going to receive a lot of qualitative versus quantitative information. So do you have a sense of how you and the consultant are going to treat the qualitative information?
Commissioner Schwartz, we do. I think the quickest way to quantify that is going to be through the online survey. So the online survey is going to give us an opportunity, through those 10 questions we ask, to categorize folks in town based on their primary mode of transportation. And one of the questions we ask is, how do you typically get around town? Many people, if the statistics are correct, and most people in this town drive for most of their trips, which I think is true, then we will have some percentage of the survey respond in selecting driving as their primary mode of transportation. The rest of the questions, then, talk about what they would like to see, what types of facilities, perhaps where, what their preferences are. So then we could use those filters through that survey to provide non-qualitative but more quantitative data as to what folks' preferences are. So I would say the short answer is the survey is going to be a primary tool. I think the interactive mapping tool that's on the website, where folks can pinpoint different parts of town and tell us what they think should happen or shouldn't happen in those portions of town, will give us another way to get some quantitative input. And then what we hear, I mean, I think one of the terms that you sometimes hear is like, what is the pulse of the community? So we're going to be looking for the themes, the repetitive requests, you know, and one of the things we heard from council that I think they were very much in line with was improving public safety. So we do not want to have collisions on our city streets. We don't want people getting injured or certainly not killed. And so I think that theme of safety is going to be one that drives the plan. Those are my answers now. I think you also make a good point in that, once we collect that information back in July, that will be probably a more detailed chance to kind of dictate how the public input we got will dictate and shape the plan.
So I guess looking to July, then, what I would ask of you when you return is to show us your prioritization schematic as to how you're going to apply priorities to the qualitative information. You know, my related question to you, as just an example, on page 11 of this Appendix B, you give us some proposed survey questions, and I think these are examples of answers that you have received or you anticipate the public giving us. Some of these are very broad and very loose and very qualitative, and from my minimal experience with statistical analysis, it seems to me that unless you apply a value to the qualitative answers, it's going to be difficult for staff to determine and recommend which make their way into the update, and what level of importance, as that translates ultimately to infrastructure improvements, which is ultimately where this will go, right? You know, public works, infrastructure improvements. So if I could ask you to consider that for July. I think my other questions, then, just a couple more, Mr. Chair. You were kind enough to send me the contract with the consulting firm, Melendras, when I asked you for it, and I just have a few questions on there. I don't know if you have this in front of you, but on page four of 10 of their contract, they discuss the updating of existing conditions in GIS, GIS mapping. And I thought that the Bicycle Coalition has done a lot of mapping, so my question to you is whether or not you've been in touch with the Santa Barbara Bicycle Coalition to see if they have that mapping and if it could be of use to us, you know, wholesale or augmentation.
Commissioner Schwartz, I believe that the updating of the existing conditions segment of the contract speaks to our GIS platform, which is something that the city maintains in and of itself. It's an information, a mapping and data information set that we use for everything from water and sewer lines to roadway networks and everything else. So that is in there, because before we begin to do any more planning or changes, we want to make sure that the existing infrastructure is current and accurate, and that task has been completed. The map that I have seen from the Bike Coalition was based in Google Maps, and it was a map that basically talked about where folks thought there were dangerous conditions, needs for improvements, those type of things around the city. I have seen that map, and I found it to be pretty useful. But at the same time, to go back to maybe some of our earlier public comments, we didn't want to take that map and have that be the basis for what we did, based on the fact that some people may claim that that map was done by advocates who already have a point of view in what the city should do for bike infrastructure. So instead of doing that, we decided to start anew. And so that's what we've done in terms of the GIS mapping.
I see. Okay. I think I have just maybe one more question, again, or maybe two, from the Melendras On page five of 10, there's a reference to a constant open forum for dialogue with the public. Now, what is constant comprised? Is it what you've already described, these neighborhood summits, online interaction? Is it all of that, or am I missing anything?
Well, unlike some other nations around the world, one of the things we do have the benefit of here is free speech and 24-hour internet and email and all those things. So I might not have chosen that word myself, "constant," but it is in there, and I think it basically references the fact that you can get in touch with city staff, you can interact with the website. All that information is tracked and compiled. So that would be, you know, I think the intent of the program was to have a fairly focused period of time that we're beginning right now through the end of May and maybe even a little into June. If there's a stakeholder group that, for some reason, wasn't able to schedule a roadshow during that time, we'll do them in June as well. So we're trying to just keep it as open as possible and allow folks to interact and give us their feedback at any time.
Okay. My last question, then, is on page nine of 10, and I mentioned this to you right before our hearing started today. There's a section called Impact Analysis, and there's a reference in terms of a traffic modeling tool, the Level of Service. Now, as you know, under Senate Bill 743, for SEQA analysis purposes, we're going to be transitioning from LOS to Vehicle Miles Traveled, VMT. Could you talk about, or maybe Mr. Foley wants to just reference, if this is going to shift now in terms of the tool we're going to use as, I know Mr. Dayton's going to come back to us and give us a proposal about how staff will be using VMT going forward. Could you talk about this being in the current Bicycle Master Plan methodology, LOS versus VMT? Thank you.
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Schwartz, I believe as far as this process, one of the things we wanted to do was make sure that the LOS analysis is being provided in SB 743, which has been adopted. We're still waiting for guidelines on that, so one of the things that will happen will be that as projects go through in the future, when those guidelines come through, we will be doing the VMT. Mr. Brown and I spoke a little before, or just after we had spoke with you, and there is an AB 417 that was approved, and in that one, basically, one of the things that was done there was, the legislature is looking to establish a bicycle transportation system throughout the state, and so one of the things they want to do was not have SEQA be a holdup to that. So there will be some provisions in there that the Bicycle Master Plan will not be required to provide SEQA analysis of the plan, and infrastructure that's associated with that will also be exempt, as long as the traffic analysis has been done for that plan.
Interesting. Were you going to add to that, Mr. Brown?
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Schwartz, the only thing I would add to what Mr. Foley said is that the LOS that's referenced in the contract is at an intersection level, and I think that Level of Service, which, for those who don't know, is basically a measure of throughput of vehicles and the amount of delay that they have to have in getting through an intersection. I think that as we consider specific bicycle projects, that actually is a fairly valuable tool to weigh trade-offs in terms of how a proposed bicycle project may impact vehicle level of service. And then the only other final thing is that Mr. Foley referenced a statutory SEQA exemption via AB 417. So that is something that we've put into our contract, that we would like our consultant to look at as one of maybe two or three potential methods to get SEQA clearance. So that, I think we're on task on all those things.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Pujol.
Thank you. My first question really is, what is it you would like to see from the Planning Commission today? Because the staff report says, comments on the progress of the outreach program, but are there specific portions of that that you particularly would like feedback on? I just would leave that open. It's my first question to you, in case there's something you were hoping would be a takeaway from this.
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Pujol, I think, for me, one of the key things, because this is the first interface with the Planning Commission, is to give you some detailed information on what we've done so far, on our level of following council direction in terms of a broad public outreach campaign, to really guide the planning process. So the short answer is, I'm not looking for anything specific or any specific attention on anything that's in the staff report or the presentation before you. Rather, we would like you to be informed and to know exactly what's happening. In fact, I'm sure some of you live in some of these neighborhoods. I think we'd like to see some commissioners attend the neighborhood summits and get a feel for how those go and what the public is saying. And then lastly, and many of you have done this already via email, is to make sure that we do broaden our list of stakeholders that we do outreach to, and certainly invite them to schedule a one-on-one meeting with us. And I'm happy to do that with any of our public speakers here today, Cars Are Basic or anyone else that is interested in meeting with us. We have the time, and we have the resources, and we'd like to get that input.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'll take that as open-ended, then. So my first comment is actually very much in concert with Commissioner Schwartz's comments. I believe she mentioned what were the goals of the project and clearly identify those in the public outreach program. My comments were similar. What I don't see so far in these materials is a basic outline of what the project is going to be, and the expected timeframe, future opportunities for comment at different levels besides the general, you know, kind of surveying the public level. So I find that kind of glaringly missing as well. So I find that kind of glaringly missing as well. And my next, my next comment are on a couple of things that we saw in our PowerPoint presentation today and also in your handouts. First of all, in the handouts, I very much appreciate and am pleased to see that you're actually going to conduct some of these workshops in Spanish. I don't know if I just missed it or not, but in the previous email that had been distributed to us with the flyer on it, I saw the translated brochure, but I didn't see any statement of interpreters or anyone available in the workshops themselves. So I think that it's excellent that you're actually going to conduct workshops in Spanish for our Spanish-speaking community. I hope that part of the outreach program does something to actually draw them into going to the workshops and that, you know, hopefully you work to get some good attendance at those. But I do appreciate that. And also, I'm very much appreciative of the eight-to-80 concept that you proposed on the PowerPoint, or I guess it's becoming sort of a popular and coined phrase, showing that bicycling should be safe, usable, and convenient for all age groups. And I think that's a great concept that should continue to be underscored. And in that vein, one of the things I see a little bit of a weakness in here is with the youth and the schools and safe routes to school and children with parents using the bike paths and that sort of thing, and basically the safety of young people with their bicycles. And I know there's a lot of good activities that take place in the school districts and by some of the groups like Coast with training and fostering safety and experience for grade-school children in terms of using the bikes like we all used to do freely when we were kids. But in terms of your stakeholder groups, in addition to listing them as stakeholders, I think that's an area that deserves some specialized attention, some additional outreach. And I also think that some of your online web materials need to be geared towards both younger groups and also older groups that will have very different concerns and needs in regards to bicycling and bicycling safety and the convenience of it and all those good things. And so I think there's something kind of needed there in terms of focusing on those groups more specifically. Now, the status of the survey and the survey itself, you know, I have to say that, as well as I agree with some of the comments by Commissioner Schwartz addressing the survey questions, most of these questions, and I do have some experience with surveys, most of these questions seem to be tending towards the need for open-ended answers. And I can understand the desire to have some framing and some additional guidance on what kinds of things you're looking for in answers. But I find that the choices are, the answers are going to be as unique as the question is, and the choices are easily foreseen as not really picking up on some of the responses I could anticipate to some of the questions. And like, for example, well, I could go through almost every single one and give you examples. I won't take up all this time today to do that. But the second one, do you identify with any of these groups? I live on or near a bikeway, I have kids in a Santa Barbara school, I own my own business, I'm a student, I'm a male, I'm a female. But what about if you don't live on a bikeway, or you don't identify with any of those groups, but you do identify with someone with a particular biking or transportation need? I mean, it doesn't get to any of that in the answers. What most prohibits you from riding a bike? Well, I know if I answer that question, I would say, I'm not prohibited, I'm deterred, and here are the reasons that sometimes I choose not to ride a bike, but I could, you know? I mean, there are many choices somebody makes. Like, it isn't always that the distance is too long, or it's too hilly, or it's too dangerous. Maybe you have to wear a suit to get where you're going, or you have to bring home a lot of groceries. I mean, it doesn't really get to those kind of things. And so it's difficult to foresee all the responses. I feel that there needs to be at least some opportunity for more open-ended responses on a lot of these. If, I mean, if, and the reasons that you do ride a bike, well, you don't list environmental reasons. Maybe you know it's good for the entire community to do it and not to use your car every time, which is my own personal point of view, so I'm sharing that with you. Would rather, you know, just not use a car if I can't. And my primary mode, I don't have one in my household. We have three or four ways of getting places, and we don't have one primary one, and we take different trips for different purposes using different modes. And then lastly, on the survey, I wanted to bring up, and I think a good example of it is question number six, what are your transportation priorities in Santa Barbara? This one, this one started me thinking about, you know, it is very important to focus on one mode of transportation at a time, because otherwise you never really frame anything that can actually come up with a really workable plan for the future. But every step along the way, you have to test yourself and consider the way that the plan fits in with the rest of the community's goals. And in our case also with this, the state goals as well. And I'm thinking now of the circulation element and the complete streets legislation. So I think when you structure these survey questions, especially number six, your transportation priorities, and also your primary mode of transportation, you need to help frame this as, you know, you can have more than one priority. Maybe the priority is to have an integrated system of multiple modes. That's what our circulation element tells us to do, for example. And I don't think that that quite comes out in some of the materials, is that we really need to see this as a piece of a broader transportation system that includes equality of all modes, and that's really what our, what our goal is. And also, in terms of the mapping, I think that comes up again, for example, in terms of mapping there. I think what we need to also look at and maybe add to the mix here is identifying the opportunities, not only for different types and improvements in bike paths and bike lanes, but also areas where there's opportunities to do more than one thing at once. Maybe if you need a mid-block pedestrian crossing and opportunity for improved bicycle lanes or parking or such at the same location. One of the things that when we were working on the circulation element that became very important is to try to match where certain roadways have this kind of conjunctive sort of use opportunity, because there can be cost savings if you're doing maybe more than one kind of an improvement at a time along a street. So anyway, those are my comments on the survey, and let's keep those and things in mind. And I think, I think it's a great program, and I look forward to attending the workshops.
Thank you. Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Brown, good to see a face for the name. Thank you for putting up with my annoying list additions yesterday and emails back and forth. I think the task you're on couldn't be more important. I'll chat with you endlessly, probably over a beer or something, about the way you're doing it. I have some of the same concerns you've already heard now, but I realize everybody's got an opinion, and everybody thinks perfect is a different thing. So let me just go through my comments. And my real overriding question is really what your purpose is in coming back in July. Will you have then a return of data and then be looking for an opinion or comments again from the Planning Commission? Is that the goal then?
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Jordan, yes, in July, we will have had enough time and done enough public outreach that we will be collecting and reporting on what we heard and what the themes were. While I have the microphone, I might just invite Commissioner Pujol to actually take the survey, because many of her questions and comments appear in the existing survey that's online. So survey design is very difficult. I actually used to teach a course in it, but I can speak a little bit more, if the commission would like, on how that took place and why we came up with what we did. But more importantly, to your point, Commissioner Jordan, in July, I think it's going to be, it's going to be kind of the fork in the road, because we're going to have enough information in July to be able to talk about which different neighborhoods had different messages, what types of facilities they may consider appropriate for their neighborhood. We'll have the results of the survey and the interactive mapping. So that'll be kind of a point where the consultant will come and talk about the findings and maybe some potential direction to consider as the plan is developed, which will be basically from that mid-July standpoint through the fall, will be the drafting of the plan. And then in that fall period, we would come back and we would show you the draft plan and ask for your specific comments on that document.
Okay, so I'd like to add to your homework for that. I think a couple other people gave you some information too, but one thing I'd like in advance of that meeting would be some type of report on what the existing status is of what we think our bicycle routes look like. If you asked me today, where's our crosstown route, where's our north-south route, I couldn't tell you. I know where I go, and I go the, I go, I go, I go the method that is the least perceived dangerous to me. So I live on the Mesa, I would not for my life go down Cliff Drive to get into downtown. I go down Shoreline and Cabrillo. Okay, so that to me is my crosstown route to get anywhere across town. But I couldn't tell you if you were looking north-south. I mean, I see people on De La Vina, De La Vina's a mess, De La Vina's mayhem for drivers, pedestrians, or bicyclists. But I have no clue right now, when you get to that point and you start to bring back some concerns that are both neighborhood-specific and then for the city from a higher elevation, where our existing emphasis has been so far on either putting the resources or where you would suggest that those crosstown routes or routes are going to go, so that I or others could start to look at what some of the constraints are there and start to worry about those constraints, what those look like, whether there's parking on the street, no parking, you know. If you were to say Mission coming west from the freeway is going to be one of your crosstown routes, I'd say, well, good luck with that, let's, let's work on that, because there's no room there, and what does that mean? So just getting a return on people's opinion, I think, is only one half of the, of the consideration. I'd also like to see some data on where we are today with what, what, what we've been supporting as routes. And then I'll just go through my comments really quick. We talked a little bit about outreach yesterday, and I will tell you that my definition of successful outreach includes the two public speakers today. And that's because I think successful outreach is not just welcoming at the end of that, the people that would have been sitting at a campfire and singing kumbaya with you, but it also involves people that disagree with you from the start, and also people that you normally wouldn't have reached with your message in a normal environment, you know? I don't look, well, in fact, I don't get a water bill anymore, and I certainly don't take the time to go online and look at my water bill stuffings. And I've had people from the city tell me, well, we, we put this information in your water bill. Yeah, that's great, but I'm not a, I'm not a water bill stuffer, reader, user. So I think, I think part of your burden, as we had this conversation yesterday, is going to be how to figure out how to involve stakeholders that are either right away in disagreement with you, or have, or have lives that just don't readily translate to looking at your Facebook page, going online, reading a stuffer somewhere, responding to the normal type of outreaches for this particular type of subject. We talked a little bit yesterday, too, about what that list meant, and I have a much clearer understanding today, but I'd also maybe suggest that you maybe take some of those names on that list, particularly maybe some of the ones that I suggested, because I get what you're saying now, and maybe have a middle level or a lower level or stages of your stakeholder outreach show, so that you do say, these are the ones that will give us our bang for the buck, but these are other ones that could possibly give us a bang for the buck, and maybe that's just a packet that gets sent to a key person. You know, you and I had some talks yesterday about my cringing when you say, oh, this, this group is covered, you know? The tourism industry is covered by Visit Santa Barbara, and I shared with you my experience on working with both of those boards and how Visit Santa Barbara is an external marketing function that doesn't really have a lot of role to play in internal goings-on in the city or the logistics with employees, or how they get to work, or facilities for their employees. And the lodging and restaurant association is more of that. Getting them in the room might be tough, same with the DO, getting them in the room to where you want to be is tough, but maybe there's a, maybe there's a mid-level where you would not do a stakeholder roadshow, but you would provide that information in a form that got them engaged, and it wouldn't rely on self-directed engagement for them to get to your Facebook page, or for them to even be prompted to get to your Facebook page or your, or your website. I think there's going to be some key groups there that you're just going to need to worry about. You know, there's a, there's a whole group of stakeholders within the business community that are obsessed with on-street parking, and just as a historical obsession. And talking to that group, trying to figure out who they are and what their concerns are, and how that relates to improved bicycle safety, when some of the options are removing street parking, will be a miserable, painful process. But I think that's part of the burden you're going to have on you, is to go, go through that process. I think I heard a comment down the road that we should be including pedestrian improvements with bicycle planning, and I agree with that wholeheartedly. I'm assuming the mobility crown you're wearing has to do with pedestrian as well as bicycle. There's a, I think, I think they coincide with each other. I'm just as interested in 20 years how I'm going to cross De La Vina Street as I am right now and how I'm going to bicycle around it, down it. So I think those are, those are concerns. That slide you had, what might be the next step slide, is the best slide I think you had in your presentation. Those are exactly the kind of questions that I'd want to get specific answers to and then work on tangible resolutions to those. I continue to look at this from two angles, and one is that I think the goal should be that, the overall goal should be that it, that we should be doing everything we can to make it safer to ride a bicycle in the city. And the other one should be that we have, we should have a responsibility to work on the congestion that we know is coming, both on the general plan in the downtown area, and as soon as this potential freeway widening project gets done, we'll have more congestion coming into downtown area. And everything we can do to offer or encourage or promote employee transportation into the downtown core by other than a car should be just as important as just bicycling recreationally or bicycling. Because I want... or bicycling because I want to bicycle. You know, I'm going to talk about your survey in a second, but you know, that's not one of the real answers in what prevents me that on Thursdays I have to wear a coat and a shirt so I can't bicycle. Or that I, as an employee, there's no targeted question that actually references employees and if you could bike to work, would you? What prevents you from biking to work? And I think that's just as important a question to ask from congestion as it is from safety. All right, your survey. I can't get off the last page. I've only entered three items there. It won't let me off that page. It continually tells me on my iPad that I've answered more than three or I haven't answered three. I close it all down, I open it back up. I'll try it later on my home computer, but I'll send you an email if that doesn't work. But that's disturbing to me that I can sit right here while you're doing your presentation and try and do the survey on my iPad, and I can't get off the last page. So I would agree also with Ms. Pujol that, yeah, and I understand you want it quick and easy, but it's way quick and easy. I think you could have put another minute of questions in there to talk more about some demographics. There's no age-related questions in there. I had the same -- my suggestion on that list yesterday among the many was the PTAs. You know, that same connection of the importance of a child bike being able to bike to school safety or a child and a parent being able to bike to school safely every morning. And there's little information in there about that relationship. Those tendencies will start young in life and then carry on, and so if we're not doing that with our children now as a manner of repetition, going to school frequently, going to the park frequently, by the time you get to be my age, you're just not a biker. So I think it's important, right from the start, when you're talking about the information you're gathering, on recognizing that part of the goal is to build the resolution for the next generation. And I think that's all my comments. I really, I'm going to -- I've got most of those on my list, most of your neighborhood meetings. I hope to attend them all, and if not, at least two or three of them. And I'm looking forward to seeing you back in July or whenever you come back because I think that will be a much more -- a much better opportunity to really roll up sleeves and work a little bit more and give you some more opinions rather than we can all write a survey or do our outreach our own different way. So I'm looking forward to actually having some tangible information back in front of me. And again, thanks for putting up with my emails yesterday.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Campanella.
Thank you, Chair Thompson. I think I would be interested in some data. I don't know if it's in the full master plan or not, or if you've captured data on your use of bikeways as we now have them, and more importantly, I guess, of conflicts or accidents that have occurred for visitors versus residents. In other words, of the conflicts that occurred pedestrian versus bike, car versus pedestrian or two -- you could also have two visitors, one in a car, one in a bike. Of what percentage of the issues that have occurred are really people who may not be familiar with the area and might have a greater risk of some type of negative occurrence? I don't know if you've captured that or not.
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Campanella, I can send the Commission the full 10 sets of maps if you're interested in the details. This is all based on what we call statewide reporting, SWITERS data. You are not required to report your place of residence when the place report is filled out, so that is not a category that we can track, unfortunately. But we certainly do have some very interesting categories in terms of where and why these collisions are taking place and who's at fault. So if you're interested in those, I can share them to you, excuse me, share them with you. And then, you know, the other thing I would say more broadly, and this kind of relates to a lot of the comments I've heard so far, is that along with this public process, which is kind of the, I would say, the push of the plan development, there needs to be a filter, and that filter is going to come from some kind of transportation expertise and decision-making expertise, which your body will be a part of. So it's not simply that we're going to ask folks what they want and where they want it and how they want it, but we're going to have to have a filter to run that through to say what's appropriate for which part of the city. Certainly considerations like preserving on-street parking will be important along with many others. So I just wanted to be clear that that filter process will take place, so.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I think, I'll put it this way, I think when you look at -- an idea might be when you look at safety and you're getting input, you might consider that the volume of people, especially in the areas where you have the incidents, and as Commissioner Jordan said, increasing over time are going to be visitors that are not familiar with the area. Secondly, they probably have a very good potential to disperse from the downtown area if you can offer them a safe way to go sightseeing or family-oriented bikes to sort of take some of the activity out of the immediate downtown area and show them what the rest of the city looks like. So perhaps when you're coming up with standards of your pathways and areas of conflict, is consider people that are not familiar versus, let's say, the people that are familiar or may be more of a risk taker or could get around things. I'd really try to consider that in your formulation. Unfortunately, I don't know how you get information from them as part of your survey, but perhaps including the bicycle shops, you know, who rent the bikes, the hotels, Visitors Bureau that may get complaints and things like that. I don't know if you're capturing that feedback. Are you as part of your survey?
We're attempting to. We're attempting to through the survey. The survey is open. It's online. It's not a statistical survey. It's not a randomized survey. It's what we call a sample survey where we just go out and it's selected. So you're self-selected, take the survey. If someone finds out, let's say they come to town and visit and they heard about the bike plan or they searched about biking in Santa Barbara and they found our survey, they'd be welcome to take it. But we're also asking folks to let us know where they live by either zip code or nearest intersection. So we will be able to say, you know, 90% of the folks that took the survey live in the city of Santa Barbara. Of the people who don't live in the city, here's what they said. So we have, I guess, a proxy for that.
Okay, well, maybe there are the points where they can find out about the survey, maybe a little more enhancement in that, the places that they would go versus, you know, they're not getting a water bill or some other way that, looking at the city website, let's say, as we do. So I would encourage with the Visitors Association, hotels, bike shops, et cetera, to sort of provide that information that would at least make them aware of it as, in addition to encouraging them to give us your input because we're considering how to make things safer and easily accessible for not just our citizens but also our visitors to make it a better experience. Then I guess the -- there were some issues relative to the statistical gathering of information, and I would suggest if there are some explanations or considerations that maybe when you come back to us, you can either talk about how they were gathered, validation, just so we're comfortable that the information that is being provided, which has been spoken about maybe with some suspicion today, that we can feel a little more comfortable as well, that the best information available is being used as part of the base for the study.
If the Commission pleases, I could speak to that now. So I took some notes on the public comment section, and let me just say a few things. First of all, what I think I heard in terms of using the American Community Survey is that there's a high margin of error for single-year surveys, which is true. So I would go ahead and agree with anyone who has the position that the margin of error in a single sample, which in American Community Survey is around 3,000 surveys, handwritten or either or computer-taken surveys for a population of 90,000, that tends to lead to a margin of error that ranges between 10 and 25 or 30%. That, to me, as a statistician, is not great information. One of the benefits of the American Community Survey is that you can extend those time periods into three- and five- and 10-year trends. Your sample size goes way up and your margin of error goes way down. So just to give some examples, in the city of Santa Barbara, there were some reports that in 2012 bicycling had increased 7% or 10% in one single year, which the data did say that, but if you pay attention to the margin of error, you would know that, you know, if it increased 10% and the plus or minus is 30%, then, you know, maybe it increased 7%, maybe it increased 13%. Somewhere in that range was the increase. What I prefer to do in that particular scenario is to not look at a single year but to look at the three-to-five-year trend. And in that particular case, we saw a 4.5% increase in bicycling in the total number of trips for people taken to work. That is a margin of error that's much lower and much more substantiated by the numbers of samples. So that, you know, I pay attention to these things. I used to teach a course in statistical analysis at UCLA for urban planners, so this is something I pay a lot of attention to. So I will throw my hat in the ring with anyone who wants to talk about the data and the significance of it. The other thing I'll say that I heard that the city was intentionally withholding information regarding bicycle coalition data, I actually don't have the bicycle coalition data. I think that some of the speakers are correct, that the bicycle coalition has, through volunteers, gone out onto city streets and done bicycle counts. I believe that they've done that. I have never participated, nor do I believe any other city staff has participated in those counts. And if they were used in previous bike plans, again, that's before my time, so I'm not quite sure to what extent they were used or what actually they showed. One thing I did in one of my prior jobs was be in charge of those counts, and I think it's very important to have a specific methodology in terms of time of day, how you train your counters, what types of things they look for, how they count intersections, are they looking for through movements, turning movements? There are a lot of variabilities when it comes out to going into a street and counting how many bicycles are crossing through any given point. So without having participated in any of those counts, I don't know how accurate they are or what they've shown, but I do know that, you know, as a public servant, we're all trained in the Public Records Act. You know, anyone who wants to get anything that's a city document, you can do it, and no one can stop you from doing it. So, you know, I always try to respond as quickly as I can to those requests, and hopefully the Commission got a feel for that prior to this meeting. And I would like to make a public pledge to anyone who participates in the process. You can email me at pbrown@santabarbara.ca.gov and ask me any of those questions, and I'll give you all the information that I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Lodge.
Thank you, Chair Thompson. Mr. Campanella was just asking some of the questions I had, and you responded to them. The big increase, how in bicycle riding, how was that number derived?
So the best, Chair Thompson and Commissioner Lodge, I think one of the things to be aware of is that across the U.S. in the last 15 years, there has been a broad observation of bicycling increasing as a mode of transportation. I believe that through things like the Complete Streaks Act of 2008, which was adopted in California, and many other initiatives where cities are revitalizing in the downtowns, walking and biking are becoming in vogue again. We're kind of moving out of the highway and roadway and suburban area that was, say, the heyday from the '60s to the '80s and '90s, and we're seeing these trends in cities. The Census Bureau collects data every year now through the American Community Survey, but the question that they ask is how you get to work. They don't ask how you go see your friends or how you go shopping. They ask how you get to work. And so the Census Bureau has put out a report that looks nationwide at these trends, and Santa Barbara is kind of at the leading edge of that trend in terms of that particular question, how folks are getting to work. Many more people are doing it almost undisputed in our city by bicycle than they were 10 or 15 years ago. You know, how much did it go up? 5%? Did it go up 10%? Again, we're talking about margins of error there, but I think that if you talk to folks who have been in this town a long time, you see the amount of bikes parked on State Street or in any of our bike -- another, one of my tasks is to provide bike parking in various parts of the city, and we simply, in a lot of cases, don't have enough bike parking for the demand. So that's another way to tell us that folks are taking bikes for various trips. So, you know, and again, and that's one of the questions of the survey, which I think is a good one, and I heard some of the answers from some of the Commissioners today, is do you think it should be a priority for the city of Santa Barbara to, you know, provide a way for people to take more trips for recreation and work by bicycle? That's a question we want the community to answer. I don't have too much doubt that bicycling is one of those tools, as is walking and taking transit and carpooling, for meeting some of the goals of the circulation element. We're going to have more congestion in this town. It's a very vibrant place. People enjoy it here, and I think that it's one of the few tools we have to combat automobile congestion, so.
Do we know or do we have any information on what percentage of the population?
Is what?
Uses bicycles on a regular basis.
Yeah, so our latest information is showing that in that 5% to 7% of folks are daily bike commuters. We have a way to extrapolate the number of trips that are being taken in town by bicycling, and it's right around 7,000 trips a day by my estimation. You know, to give an example, the city that I worked for before I came to Santa Barbara, the city of San Francisco, had 90,000 trips a day by bicycle. So bigger city, about 10 times bigger and maybe about 10 times more bicycle trips. So right in proportionality with Santa Barbara as relates to population. So, you know, again, without having spent a lot of time developing a methodology to determine that, that's an estimation. But, you know, there's other communities in certainly out in Goleta and Isla Vista that have a higher proportion of trips being taken by bicycle and for various reasons that I'm sure you all understand. But that is something we can continue to monitor and develop for the Commission if they would like.
Well, I've agreed with many of the comments my colleagues have made, and on the outreach, I can -- I don't know how you deal with this, but I think, like with the neighborhood meetings, the people who come will be self-selected, and they're likely going to be bicycle riders or bicycle activists of one kind or another. And how you reach the other folks, I don't know, but they need to be included. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Higgins?
Thank you. All of the comments made by my fellow Commissioners, I totally support. So your survey is totally subjective, and you're going to have to deal with the other aspect of the population out there that doesn't believe the conclusions that you've already reached in the plan are worth pursuing. So I just encourage you to, you know, do your best and do overtime with other groups' people so you can better address that. For example, question four, it just sort of illustrates how subjective the assumptions already are in your survey. So I'd love to see some more objective and quantitative questions asked. Also love to see more outreach done outside of the city if you can. I don't know how you do that, but that gets at the commuter questions or base of people that are commuting and don't necessarily live in the city limits that could attend a meeting in the evening. And my last comment, I guess, comes back to what Commissioner Pujol asked, which was, what's the goal? If the goal's obviously to improve or modify or update the plan, maybe some of the questions could, that you're asking in a subjective form or objective form, state something like, the last updated the plan or the baseline plan includes these assumptions or these objectives or these goals, are those still relevant? So I'm guessing you may have some segment of the population that doesn't even know there's a plan and certainly doesn't know what it says. So maybe that's a way of getting at your actual objective here is updating the plan with specific questions out, so what needs to be updated?
Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz, you have some other comments?
Yes, I'd like to give my comments now. Thank you. So regarding the stakeholder outreach list, Mr. Brown? So regarding the stakeholder outreach list, Mr. Brown, the initial list that you sent us stated that this, those on this list are to receive invites for stakeholder roadshows, survey participation, and bicycle master plan website updates. Is that still, would that still be the purpose of utilization of this list? Because I have several to add for you, but I wanted to understand the purpose of this list, because it's not entirely clear to me if it's just about the roadshow invites or broader.
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Schwartz, that is our understanding of the primary purpose of the stakeholder roadshow, but certainly the commission is welcome to direct us to use that list in other ways. One of the things that I'd like to be sensitive to is not, you know, over emailing people or being, I would say, polluting inboxes and whatnot. My main idea was to use staff resources, community resources, nonprofits, engage portions of the community, the Transportation and Circulation Committee, the Planning Commission, and develop a list of folks that would be interested in interacting with staff and consultants and all of our tools to get their feedback. So if you want to add, anyone can add, be added to the list, you can email me and/or call me, and I can add to the list if you want that attention. So the list is dynamic.
Okay, if I could give you three.
Sure.
Organizations right now. Two companies, I think, would be interested in staying in touch, Yardi Systems in Goleta. I've spoken with the CEO of Yardi about the challenges their employees are facing in terms of transportation, multi modes of transportation to get to work. And then also Citrix Online, I've spoken to Citrix as well, the same challenges. And then you have some media outlets here, I would suggest, I don't see News Hawk, and I would suggest you add News Hawk. Then to the calendar that you have on page six in Exhibit B, I thought it was interesting, nowhere is the Planning Commission identified in the calendar of staff coming to us. So there are three city council hearing references and no Planning Commission. So if you would please include today's hearing under the April calendar, and then if you're coming back in July, please put the PC date there as well, so everybody who's receiving this will know. And I don't know if you mentioned a third, or is there just going to be two hearings at the Planning Commission?
There would be.
There's a third, you could add that, that's, yeah. Right? Okay. And then lastly, I just want to underscore something that I mentioned and now has been discussed by some of my colleagues, and this does go back to the very qualitative questions and suggested responses. I'm just going to strongly recommend that in working with the consulting firm, that you define or determine in advance how you're going to value the qualitative responses, so that when you go to do your data analytics on this, that's meaningful, because you have this, I would say, very admirable, robust, public engagement process that's proposed. But if we expend all these resources, human and financial, to engage the public, and we don't have a really sound, tight methodology for what we're going to make of the responses, then I'm afraid that it will really have kind of minimal meaning to what we, again, very admirably, you know, want to accomplish. And once we gather the information, then that's it, you know? Can't go back out to the public too many times, I think, because of the price tag associated with this. So regarding that, I did not see in the Melinda's contract, you know, statistical analysis, data analytics, I, maybe I overlooked it, but, and you don't have to answer today, whether that's a staff expertise or a consulting expertise, we have got to bring that expertise into the mix to further refine the questions that we're going to ask, how, A, B, how we're going to capture the data, and C, how we're going to evaluate the data, even qualitative data, converting it to quantitative information that will then ultimately translate to, so what do we do about with all of this? You know, which public, which infrastructure improvements do you then put forward, let's say eventually, to Planning Commission Council and so forth? Those would be my highlight comments.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson and, excuse me, Chair Thompson and Commissioner Schwartz, am I just ask one clarifying question?
Sure.
First of all, you know, I think we all understand what a qualitative question is, and I agree with the commission in that many of the survey questions are about people's preferences and opinions. Would they like to see more of a certain type of bike facility in town? We can quantify that by how many people selected a given facility. When it comes to, you know, I use the word prohibit, one of the commissioners might prefer the word deter, you from riding a bike, just to alliterate, this, the purpose of this question is to find out what obstacles are there and what obstacles may need to be removed. I guess since I've heard the word quantify so many times, I would like to know, what is an example from the commission of a question that is quantitative and not qualitative when you're seeking public input?
Would you like me to respond?
Sure.
Because I mentioned it. So here's an, I'm going to turn your question around a little bit to elaborate. So number four, the question number four, you have some answers here, select one. One of the answers is routes are too hilly. Well, I don't mean to be kind of tongue-in-cheek in what I'm about to say. Yeah, and what are we going to do about that routes are too hilly? We're going to reroute the bike routes all the way around the hills? I mean, so I'm bearing down on.
Yes.
Say, what are we really, yes, that is the answer?
Well, that's what one of your fellow.
Some people live up on the hill, they got to get down.
Right, and so that's what one of your fellow commissioners talked about. He prefers not to come down Correo or climb up Correo to the Mesa because it's too steep. So his preference was to come around Shoreline and along Cabrillo Boulevard. That tells us that that is a route, many people say that, and that's a preferred route for the Mesa. It would make more sense for us to consider improving the routes that are less hilly that connect to the Mesa than, say, the steep ones like Correo. So, yes.
So that would be connecting, an answer, and who knows how many, how many would answer it that way, to a solution.
Correct.
That's how you would tie.
One of the ways, yes.
One of the ways, okay. The next one, to the answer, too dangerous, colon, fast-moving cars. So again, what's the solution that we, you might propose attaching to it? Are you going to reduce speed limits? Are you going to reroute bike lanes or bike paths around the busiest streets? You know, that's all I'm saying is to make a greater connectivity, a direct linkage between answers and solutions that ultimately, I'm sure, you're going to translate into infrastructure changes or improvements.
Well, that's great, that helps. Thank you for that answer. I now have a very.
That would be just an example of my thought, maybe others would like to make some, give you examples as well.
I got that now, and I have a very clear way of translating how we collect this information into what it might turn into. So thank you for that explanation.
Commissioner Peugeot?
Thank you. I have a question that doesn't relate to the actual outreach program, and actually kind of brings this whole thing back to our ultimate goal in the outreach, and that is to produce an updated master plan. So my question is this, though, and I'll start by prefacing it with my confusion, and I am accustomed to reading these things, but still confused about the status of the existing and proposed master plan in terms of how it fits with our overall general plan. Our existing plan for the master plan has goals and policies in it, and then a lot of other information and tools and whatnot. And what I believe is the case for our existing plan is that it's an implementation kind of master plan, tearing off some of the actions of the general plan. And I would like some confirmation of that, and also, will the new bicycle plan be that kind of a status? I mean, it fits in and coordinates with the overall general plan, but it's not a policy document at the same level as the general plan is, correct?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Peugeot, correct. So I would liken it, if I were to make an analogy, to a specific plan for bicycling. If you're familiar with a specific area plan, and it kind of gets into a little more detail, it certainly needs to comply with the general plan. And in this particular case, I would say that the bicycle master plan, you know, once it is adopted, will need to comply with the general plan and the circulation element, but it will get a little bit more specific on what should and could take place in different parts of the city and what changes may come forward.
And basically, small p, small g, goals and policies, and then also taking it further into some actual master planning-type ideas, like, that would get closer to the physical implementation of these kind of changes. I think that in and of itself would be a good way, good thing to do in your outreach program, is to explain what this thing is, because I'm not sure if you, if I've seen that, maybe I missed it, but thanks.
Is that it? Okay. Commissioner Higgins, you had some more comments?
You, just to, Mr. Brown, on your question as about what could make the survey more objective, you asked. So you got a question there, number five is, you know, should it be a goal of the city to accommodate more? That's a good example of an objective question, I think, that would get at the heart of what some of the speakers here today are opining on. So question number four is maybe a two-part question. Do you feel prevented from, like, you're prohibited from riding a bike? Yes or no? And if it's yes, then you can move on to the second part of that question, how so? So, and then other questions in here that are open-ended could be easily just reformat it to be ranked, if you want to provide the answers. Those are just some suggestions. And just back on to other outreach groups, dovetailing on what Commissioner Schwartz said, it'd be good to maybe get some taxi cab companies or Uber drivers in there, some people that are, you know, heavy users of the roadways already.
Commissioner Campanello, you have some other comments?
A comment would be, you know, it's a very worthwhile effort to try to improve the system. I think that's what we're all concerned about and really can see the benefit, especially with increasing visitors and also with a population that would be, it would appear would like to bike if it was safe. I think one of the takeaways from the survey may be, number one, how many people actually responded? You know, not looking at the answers, per se, but is there a level of interest on the feedback that you got, that people want to really participate in the process? That'd probably be my first takeaway, looking at those that did, users and potentially people that wanted to use. As far as the questions, I know in a professional survey, there'll be, if you said no to this question, what about this? You know, you'll do certain type of filtration during the process. These are sample questions, not necessarily the order that somebody would take them or what, if you get a certain answer, you may ask some more responses from them when you finalize this. You might try to dig a little deeper.
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Campanello, one thing I would say is that in survey design, one of the things that we try to stay away from is if yes, then go here, if no, then go there. That kind of prevents us from being able to look at holistically what everyone who took the survey said. So in the case of that particular example from Commissioner Higgins, we don't really need to say, ask people yes or no in that question, because one of the options is, nothing prohibits me from riding a bike, I ride regularly. So we know that that person who answered that survey would have said, no, nothing in this town prevents me from riding a bike, I'm a regular user. So that is a way to capture that yes or no answer. We certainly are going to track how many people take the survey, and so I think, you know, I wouldn't worry too much about the design of the survey. I definitely think there's been some good points that have come up, but I would just invite us all to take a look at the results when we come back in June. I think they are going to be informative, and I think that, you know, again, with the caveat that this is not what we would call a random sample. So we're not going to be able to say that this survey has a, you know, margin of error that's within 3 percent, like Gallup poll would do for a presidential election. This is not a randomized survey, this is a selected survey, but at the same time, for as broad of the outreach as we're doing, we are going to get a lot of participation. We have already, it's only been up for a few days. And so I think that the commission may be pleased with the results in July more so than they are with the draft questions today.
Well, my last, thank you. My last comment is, I guess the reason we're here is because we're planning. You know, this is, we know what's coming up, we know there's going to be more people here visiting, and what we need to do is make the experience better, both for visitors and for our own workers who, you know, probably want to get out of a car and would bike if they could. So we're looking ahead to what this, your intersection analysis of all the traffic and all the incidents, what we're trying to do is better plan to handle that in a safer and more accommodating way. So I appreciate the process, we don't have all the answers yet, but I think the key thing is we're looking at it. And hopefully, when you get this data, it could evolve itself into transportation and public works trying to come up with solutions. They probably already have a big list of things that could be improved, and if you, maybe this survey will help start putting priorities, because there's always priorities for funding, to help scope that out, both for public works to put their budget together as well as make their presentation and get approval by city council. So thank you for kicking this off in a very professional way, and good luck, and we look forward to seeing the results at another meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I have just a few comments that are different or maybe in addition to what has already been stated. I want to also say that we need to make an effort to reach out to organizations that are not bicycle-oriented, the car-oriented organizations who you might not think you want to go get information from, I think is really vital. And like was mentioned a couple of times, that pedestrian coordination has got to be considered. You know, there's another mode of transportation that I don't see mentioned, there's a certain demographic in our community, and I'm sure around the country, that use skateboards as a primary mode of transportation. So you might want to look and see whether there's anything that ought to be investigated there, do they blend with bicycles? We want to keep them off the sidewalks, but you know, there's a lot of young folks that use those as their primary mode of transportation. The other thing, in a master plan for the city, we have to recognize that not all areas of the city are bicycle viable. I personally used to ride a bicycle from the time I was about five, and I gave it up about 15 years ago because I didn't feel safe on some of the narrow, winding streets around here and hilly streets. And so we have to recognize that as a constraint when we're talking about a bicycle plan for the city. There's only certain portions of the city that bicycle riding is really safe and viable. And a lot of the people that I know that do bicycle riding load their bikes on their cars and drive somewhere where they feel safe to put on their elastic clothes and colorful shirts and then ride for about 10 miles or so and put it back on their car and drive on home, well, that's one portion of bicycle riding, but I'm not sure that's exactly what you're trying to get to, you're talking about through the city streets. So those are just some areas that I think we need to pay attention to, we shouldn't ignore when you're coming up with the overall plan. So unless there's any other questions or comments from the commission, we look forward to seeing you come back in a few months.
Great. Thank you all for your comments, I really do appreciate it. I think the process and the plan will be much better based on hearings like this one.
Okay, thanks. That's it for the discussion item. Excuse me, public comments are closed, and we heard your input.
I think your response today demonstrates how you're going to treat stakeholders who oppose some of the benefits.
I think that if you want to debate, you can talk to the staff on your own.
You can very well.
Okay.
Comment, you have the right to do it, it's just a point of order, you're demonstrating.
Committee and liaison reports, staff hearing officer?
So, long meeting yesterday, six items on the agenda, all of them but one pretty ordinary, the usual existing incursions into the setback then with just being doors or windows being modified. One was kind of interesting up somewhere, can't remember where it was, but a rather large addition that took up the bulk of the time, almost an hour of the six items that only lasted an hour and a half. And that was kind of interesting because the staff hearing officer, her stance was that the way it was being laid out was to accomplish a second dwelling. And she didn't have a problem with the second dwelling, but that's why, that was not why it was before her. It was only before her for a couple incursions into a modification where it should be in for what, a performance plan or whatever that's called, for a second dwelling. And she said, well, you know, if you want to go away and come back for that, I don't see a problem with that, but I do see a problem with what you're here with today. So it was kind of an interesting discussion and some play with the plans that didn't get resolved and it was actually the first one, I think, I've seen in over a year that was continued to come back after some other work, either some other work or a redesignation for what the, what the applicant was applying for. So that's all, thanks.
Thank you.
And I'm, I will say now too, that I'm just embarrassed that I suggested that cars are basic be added onto the list. If that, if that is the type of, you know, no good deed goes unpunished, but if that is the type of participation we're going to see, then I probably take back my encouragement for participation because I do think they have a role, but I think that is not the role. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Capanella, committee and liaison report?
Thank you, Chair Thompson. On Monday, I looked, looked at the tape live and then looked at the tape after, pardon me, live for two items and the city council preempted it on redistricting. And then I looked at the tape, but interesting at the meeting, there were four items that were discussed, either new concept reviews or continued concept reviews, five items, four of the items were medium-high density programs under the AUD program and rental projects. One was the Grace Lutheran Church, which would be an affordable project. So they're under AUD principles that it's being developed. So actually, there was five projects that were utilizing it. I think when we have our meeting, our housing meetings are coming, I might go into some other observations in detail. But positively, I think the architects were able to either go from for sale to rentals or larger rentals to smaller rentals and increase the numbers without increasing the square footage. So the designs that they picked were fairly, still left fairly amount of open area and open space. So I think some of the constraints, pardon me, some of the conditions that were put forth for the program are being adhered to and nobody was asking for any modifications. So that was positive. And I think that was about it on that, that, and we'll, we'll talk about it more when we have our housing meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Higgins?
The wayfinding committee is, our process is underway and there was a committee meeting last week, very informative, couple hours, and essentially the consultant is underway. The process is underway to do outreach to determine what kinds of things need to be improved in terms of wayfinding primarily for tourists, destinations, attractions, what, what really is the direction for what the consultant's going to spend money on designing? So quite a, quite a road ahead of them in terms of, first of all, what are the things in town that need to be better identified and then how they're going to do that, how that process is going to unfold from a design standpoint? And there will be further committee meetings and I'll provide updates at a later time. Commissioner Jordan was also in attendance and he can chime in if he'd like. Nope, okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Chair Thompson. I went to the water commission hearing in March since Commissioner Schwartz was out of town, and I think you probably all heard the publicity about higher rates and so on and proceeding with the, the D-Sal plant. I happened to have a conversation with Joshua Hagmark, Water Resources Manager, this morning, and the, the city was able to put back online a well that had been more or less abandoned. They'd tried to do it before and were unsuccessful, but recently they were able to out toward in the Los Pocetus area. And the water is full of sulfur and manganese and another chemical, but it was, it's fine to add to the recycle, the reclaimed water for parks and the golf courses and so on. So that'll be an additional supply that, that he estimated was between 200 and 300 acre feet a year, which was, was some good news. The March 25th meeting of the Historic Landmarks Commission had on its agenda 203 Chapala Street, which some of you will remember. It's a Plunkett and Edwards building, it came before the planning commission in 2008. And it's being converted into, it's a warehouse in the back and sort of offices in the front. It's being converted into seven condos and it was approved back then and HLC was pleased with the design. It was a former 7-Up bottling plant and there used to be a tower on it, which is being reconstructed. So they were, they were happy, happy to see that. These are not, these are condos with two parking spaces each and guest parking and so on, so these are not going to be anywhere near affordable, I would guess.
Okay, thank you. Any, anyone else have any, any reports? Okay, the meeting's adjourned and we'll see you all in two weeks.